Rio Grande County, Rio Grande County, it's got South Fork and it's got Center, Center and South Fork. Rio Grande County, it's a population 12,000 county in Colorado, South Central. It's got a 14% poverty rate. Right now, they have a race for the county commissioner. There's the Republican primary for the county commissioner, and you have Tyler Ratslaff, who's running against John Nofsker. Okay, and I had, you know, a couple of questions, and I guess for both of them, but I was gonna, you know, highlight John Nofsker first, and then Tyler Ratslaff. Number one, what is your understanding of the RWR project, and what is your position on it? Number two, do you have any plans on combating poverty? Number three, with Zach and Jimmy, there is a grand theft auto. They were, you know, how, did you see that? Were you a part of any of that? What was going on with that? And I think actually, they're gonna prosecute that. So, in Rio Grande, so the DA, they didn't even charge him with grand theft auto. They charged him, they didn't even charge him with theft. So, you know, I wasn't gonna say any of that. Basically, as a, um, I guess, citizen journalist, the idea is you throw the question out, and you let them answer. So, it's not about, you know, beating them over the head, but ask them one question, maybe a follow-up question, but you're not gonna sit there and harass a person over, you know, "You're gonna adopt my plan for poverty. You're gonna combat poverty the way I want you to." I mean, I wish they would, but he didn't mention that South Fork is where people go to have fun. South Fork was where people go to have fun, but Center, that's your meat and potatoes. That's where you have your, you know, salt of the earth and your humble people. That's where the humble people are living in Center. But South Fork is where you go to have fun. And so, he was saying that a lot of time, the place that gets all the tourist dollars, gets all the attention. So, I guess he's saying, well, I mean, what's in South Fork? South Fork, my God, from, you know, San Luis to Mesita, to Antonito, to Magodi. Where is, South Fork is like on the exact opposite side of the San Luis Valley. He also mentioned, or they mentioned that he was praying, which, you know, according to the First Amendment, there's an establishment clause. You're not supposed to establish any kind of religion. So, I don't know if he's a Muslim, or Buddhist, or Christian, or what he's doing, but he's not being an American. He's not adhering to the First Amendment. The whole idea of the First Amendment is, if you do get a, you know, Muslim, or Buddhist, or, you know, a religion that you don't agree with, and they institute that religion for the people, well, you wouldn't like that at all, right? So, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. All you gotta do, to see if something's fair, is just reverse the damn rules. That being said, it's not bad politics. Saying a little prayer, you know, I guess if I'm in the audience, I don't have to bow my head, but, um, as a Christian, John Nofsker, I wanna know, are you opposed to these ten wrongs? "I believe that you should not rob, rape, hit, or kill, or abuse, or bear false witness, or torture, arson, or kidnap, or enslave." Do you agree with all those? Let me repeat them. Don't rob, rape, hit, kill, abuse, bear false witness, torture, arson, kidnap, or enslave. I think that's a good common law for Colorado. What do you think? You agree with all those ten? Those are pretty, you know, those are ten wrongs. Those are evil, are they not? "Jesus said the golden rule is you do unto others as you would have them do unto you." Those are all evil because you wouldn't want, okay, right? That's, it's obvious, right? Isn't it obvious? I think it might be obvious. And then I also want to know, do you think it's okay to collect rainwater? So, John Nofsker, do you think it's okay to collect rainwater? You say you're a Christian. Are you really? South Fork, you got the, you know, why is everybody having fun in South Fork and not Center? Does Center not have, and then Montevista Basketball, they got the basketball gym in Montevista. That's where the police officers are playing. So, I don't know, okay, and what's that about? What's that about, huh? South Fork is the fun place, and Center is the place where the meat and potatoes are? Do they even have potatoes in South Fork? Or Center? That grand theft auto, they were driving all over the place, but apparently, they came out of South Fork. So, my God, what other crap is coming out of South Fork? And then, oh, plans on combating poverty. 14% poverty rate is not as bad as Castilla County and Canejos County? But, it's nothing to brag about, and, you know, you should do something about it if you care about your people. Do you care about the people of Rio Grande? Or did you just get into office, and now you're just circling the wagons, and you're telling everybody to back the hell off, so you could spend all the money and have all the power and do whatever you want with your, basically turn, I hope John Nofsker isn't turning Rio Grande County into his own little private tyranny. He's a dictator of Rio Grande County, is he? Does the sheriff obey Nofsker? Does Nofsker, are they independent? How, what's the relationship between John Nofsker and the sheriff of Rio Grande? So, the Board of County Commissioners, the phone number is 719-657-2744. Now, this is the Republican primary, like I said, 20 days from now. So, this is Republican versus Republican, John Nofsker. And the other guy's a veterinarian. The other guy is, he owns the Alpine Veterinarian Place in Alamosa, Tyler Ratslaff. Tyler Ratslaff. And I'll tell you, off the top, Tyler Ratslaff, I, I kinda, I'm tilted on the side of Tyler Ratslaff. I'm, you know, Democrat, I'm liberal, progressive. So, you know, take that for what it is. But between these two guys, I like Tyler Ratslaff better. So, let's see, John Nofsker, John Nofsker. What is John Nofsker all about besides shredding the First Amendment? They said the Pledge of Allegiance, alright. If I was kneeling down while you said the pledge, would you have a problem with the? Commissioner Nofsker, Commissioner Bothell, Commissioner Glover, along with the interim county administrator Judy Egbert, clerk of the board, Deanne Jacobs. Those are the three county commissioners, at least on their website, is Scott Deacon, District Number One, Jean Glover, District Number Three, and then John Nofsker, District Number Two. So, they're running for District Number Two County Commissioner. These are the executive legislators of the local government. These are the highest. There is no king, right, in America. We elect presidents, and we elect county commissioners. And we don't have one president or county commissioner, or one king of the county. Maybe the sheriff, kind of, but the sheriff, because his budget is tied to the county commissioners, has to respect the county commissioners somewhat, if he wants to get a paycheck, or if he wants any money from the county. So, the county commissioners have the power of the purse when it comes to the sheriff, but the sheriff technically doesn't have to do a goddamn thing the county commissioners want out of him at all. So, they're the top dogs. They're the triumvirate. John Nofsker is the head executive legislative power in Rio Grande County right now, currently. And so is Scott Deacon, and so is Jean Glover. Those are your county triumvirates. When people say, "Hey, who runs Rio Grande County?", well, you say Scott Deacon, Jean Glover, and John Nofsker. That's who runs Rio Grande County. That's who runs those 12,000 people. That's who runs those 14,000, there's 12,000, uh, uh, the poor, 14%, 12%? The 14% poverty rate. So, the poor people, and the middle class, and the homeless, and the wealthy, these are your rulers in Rio Grande County. Scott Deacon, Jean Glover, and John Nofsker. To get the recall on the ballot, recall supporters had to collect 909 signatures from registered voters in Rio Grande County in 60 days, but they did not collect enough signatures. So, wow, that's interesting. John Nofsker was faced with a recall election. He's a Rock Creek Rancher. I guess Rock Creek is the town that he's from. Ranchers, some of these assholes have three acres. That's a ranch, motherfucker. That's barely enough for you and your, you know, whatever, your Brady Bunch. It might reside toward the eastern edge of Rio Grande County, but the new commissioner recognizes diverse issues throughout the issue, or the, throughout the area. So, this, um, I just got these writings. This is a literature review on John Nofsker. Just less than two months ago, "April 29th, 2022, Rio Grande County Commissioner signed a declaration of disaster to support and bring additional resources to the city of Montevista, and those affected by the 17-acre fire that ravaged the small community on Wednesday, April 20th, Rio Grande County and the city of Montevista have been working together for the last several days to ensure that resources were made immediately available to people affected and displaced from their homes by the fire. The disaster declaration will bring additional support from both state and federal agencies. Del Norte, a committee has been formed to recall Rio Grande County Commissioner John Nofsker. This nonpartisan effort came about in light of serious concerns about how Rio Grande County is being managed. According to the organizational chart on the commissioner's website, the commissioners work for the citizens of the county, and many citizens are questioning the actions of Nofsker and the board, of which he's currently the chairman. You only got three people, and he's like, 'I'm the boss of you two assholes', and the other two are like, "Okay." The whole idea of having three commissioners is that they're all supposed to be independent. And you know what? If I'm running the county, I'm getting a unanimous consent. Now, we're gonna do things my way, and hell with, no, we're all, we're gonna, if three people can't get along together, how the rest, we're supposed to expect the rest of us to get, to be able to get along? How they expect the rest of us to get along if our county leaders aren't able to get along? "Our concerns are that John Nofsker has created an adversarial working environment for county employees, which has resulted in both volunteer enforced resignations, as well as terminations, has created an adversarial working environment for other elected county officials." So, what, he's being hostile? What do you mean adversarial? "Some officials refuse to meet with him. He's incompetent. He's unprepared for meetings. He fails to grasp the issues that are important to the county, which delays important decisions, and is clearly a failure to perform the duty sworn into his oath of office, has difficulty communicating effectively with his constituents." Isn't that Ronald Reagan, the great communicator? Ronald Reagan was the great communicator. You know, why wouldn't you want to talk to the people? Why wouldn't you want to have the people? God, wouldn't that be embarrassing to be a county commissioner and to have nobody to show up to your meetings? I would have at least 10 people. I mean, are you representing working-class families, or you just, your goddamn self? "He conducts himself in an inappropriate manner with his peers, subordinates, and external persons. He has difficulty communicating effectively with his constituents. He's frequently volatile, threatening, confrontational, unprofessional, fails to follow state and county policies, procedures, especially in terms of adhering to open meeting rules. While our apprehension has been building for some time, we became truly distressed when the well-qualified director of public health was terminated in May. Only six weeks after that termination, the interim director of public health had resigned citing a lack of support from the Board of County Commissioners, which all, had also appointed themselves the County Board of Health." What the hell? Is this a dictatorship? Is this communist goddamn China? Is this motherfucking Stalin, Stalin Nazi Germany? What the hell is this Mussolini, Italy? What the hell's going on in Rio Grande? What the hell's going on in Rio Grande? They weren't able to get those 900 signatures out. There's 12,000 people, so I wonder what that was about. Probably when he first came in, you're gonna have, you know, I would think there's a reactionary force immediately, but maybe there's something to some of this. Every night, Rio Grande County residents sleep in a city or a town, designated a census, designated place like Alpine, or Gerard, or an unincorporated community, Homelake, or Parma? Who, who talks like this? This, "Variation between communities can appeal, appear wider than the highway stretches between them. We represent the whole county," John Nofsker said. "My priorities are to boost economic growth without losing the very things we like about living here." What specifically are you talking about, John Nofsker? Well, you know how it is. When other people try to tell you not, you don't want to, didn't you, are you a Confederate? Is that what you're trying to tell me? Are you? I hope that you're not affiliated with the KKK. I, I hope that's not what he's talking about there. "Built with different economic DNA, South Fork and Center are situated in different ecosystems on east and west sides of the county. South Fork is a place where people wanna go and play," Nofsker said. "At the fork between rivers and highways, South Fork attracts recreation and tourism dollars." "We represent the whole county. My priorities are boost economic growth without losing the very things we like about living here." Yeah, right, John Goodman, you're part of a little, interesting, little secret organization? "Is you or is you not my constituency?" I'm just speculating. I'm just speculating. I'm sure, I'm sure the guy's a great guy. I'm sure he's a great guy. Probably, I mean, he's a Christian, right? So, he's like Jesus. You treat others the way you wanna be treated, right? And, you know, the golden rule. Isn't the golden rule awesome? It's so logical and wonderful. And like, all the religions recognize it. God, I love the golden rule. You all love the golden rule? Hey, give me an amen. Anybody in the comments, give me an amen if you love the golden rule. "Center is more of a meat and potatoes town," John Nofsker noted. "My task is not to neglect Center while the bright, shiny objects of tourism attract attention." What? So, it seems like, is there a red light district in South Fork, and does John Nofsker go party? Sounds like John Nofsker goes and parties in South Fork all the time. "Both are statutory towns, so therefore, he rules over you sons of bitches." You wanna know something? I'm gonna check out the population. If either Center or South Fork has 2,000 people, then they could declare home rule. And why wouldn't you declare home rule as soon as you get, wow, okay, the town's population of Center is 1,929, according to the 2020 census. 1,929? My God, just get 100 people. Hey, Center, Center, Colorado. If you get 100 people in the Center, just 100 more people, you can apply to be a home rule city, which means you'll have your own police, your own, you know, water, your own whatever, your own treasurer, secretary, your own commissioners, your own mayor and city council is what you'll have. You'll get a mayor and your city council, and you'll get to run your own city. You won't have to listen to the goddamn assholes from the county government. You'll be able to run yourself. And isn't that American? To be able to run yourself to run the city? That's how I look at things. In America, some people think it's the feds, and then the state, and then local government? Nah, it's local government. We, the people, are in charge. Local government is at the top. So, if Center was to do home rule, that would be fantastic, right? Local, and then the state, and then the feds are like, you know, like way, way, way down. So, it starts with we, the people. It starts with we, the people. It starts at the town, the city, the county. It starts at the local government. And right now, for Center, Colorado, and South Fork, the local government is Rio Grande. So, that's why he's saying it the way he is saying it. And then South Fork has 386, so South Fork has a way to go. How come South Fork is the place to go, and there's only 380, you know, something people there? That's according to 2010. There's 400 people, and then there's, you know, uh, almost 2,000 in, you know, Center. So, Center is, see, the history is a site of timber milling operations, da-da-da-da-da. Creed, Creed is the capital of Mineral County. Okay, so, carrying on with information. This is just good information, right? Not a lot of people read, but people listen. So, people, you know, can speak and listen. So, as long as you got internet connection, then you can figure out what the hell is actually going on. "In your county, Center children attend school in town, but students from South Fork travel to Creed, Del Norte, and farther for education. In addition to homeschooling, Center straddles Rio Grande and Suatch counties, with a lot of properties to the north and most of the population south of town." That's interesting. So, they're actually in Suatch and Rio Grande County. The seven-town board members are elected to serve at large, all of them residing within the town limits. There's a town board member? Seven-member board? Interesting. So, they're basically almost there anyways. "Agriculture drives the economy, but K through 12 schooling and a long history. As much like Del Norte, down the road, school districts provide employment, census swelling, students, and events worthy of attention during the school year. Schools, churches, and government can stabilize and define communities as the current pastor of the First Presbyterian Church in Montevista." John, oh, he's a pastor, and he's being all rude, and, you know, whatever they were saying for the, he didn't get recalled, so we gotta, you know, respect the will of the people, I guess. But never got voted on, but they didn't get enough signatures. So, as the current pastor of the First Presbyterian Church, what is a Presbyterian? I know they're Christians. Are they the ones that speak in tongues? Well, as, as the pastor, as the lead speaker of the tongues, Presbyterian, speaking, uh, in tongues, you know, is that? Not a Presbyterian practice. Okay, that's interesting. Story of Pentecost calls us to cross boundaries. Who speaks in tongues? Plains Bureau, let's see, this is confusing mainstream Protestant. "It was present in the early church, confirmed in the Acts of the Apostles, addressed by Paul as a congregational problem." Da-da-da-da-da. Where, I'm just gonna say, speaking in tongues. Let's see, what, um, Glossolalea? Which Christian sect? Speaks in tongues. There we go. Christian, Christian sect. Pentecostal. Okay, you Pentecostals are the ones that speak in tongue. Okay, okay. So, what is a Presbyterian? What the hell is a Presbyterian? A believer in Jesus Christ. And you know what? Even though I am an atheist, I have a Jesus Christ complex. So, Jesus is a great guy. Great guy. He stood up against the empire. He stood up for what's right and what's good. Fantastic. What's, so, let's see, Presbiterian. He was a socialist, right? Long-haired hippie, wearing sandals, giving bread and food out to the people. He's basically a communist, right? Just giving food out to people, not telling them to go work, but just handing food out. Just handing bread and wine out, like it was, you know, like it was growing on a fig tree. Presbyterianism. Is that what I want? Yeah. So, Presbyterianism, it's part of the Reformed tradition with the Protestant, Protestantism traces its origin to the Church of Scotland. Oh, okay. Interesting. Presbyterian churches derive their name from the Presbyterian form of church government by representative assemblies of elders. Many Reformed churches are organized this way, but the word Presbyterian, when capitalized, is often applied uniquely to churches that trace their roots to the Church of Scotland, or to English dissenter groups that formed during the English Civil War. Wow, that's fantastic. It comes from the English Civil War, or from Scotland? You know, I don't like the royalist, but Mary Queen of Scots. I just, it's fucking Mary Queen of Scots, you know? I love Scotland. Well, how come Scotland isn't its own country? Anyways, that's, that's a little, there's you. There's a little bit about, uh, your, your Presbyterianism there, you, you know? "So, John Nofsker fills position with a similar sense of duty that motivated him to run for county commissioner. New to the Presbyterian Church, a curious John Nofsker took training courses for pastors more than six years ago." So, he's a brand-new Presbyterian. He was like, "You know what? To hell with all you goddamn Protestants and all you Catholics. I'm tired of you Baptists. I'm gonna be Presbyterian." After a couple of months of training, the pastor left, left the church, and John Nofsker filled the interim role. Now, he gives a 20-minute sermon every Sunday, and no one mentions interim anymore. All right, so John Nofsker has taken the, goodness gracious. I hope it ain't like the lottery. Is that what, Rio Grande County is like the lottery? Okay, I told the church when I was approached to run for commissioner, John Nofsker explained commitments. "There's Pentecostal motherfuckers that make the Mormons look normal." "There's damn Pentecostal motherfuckers that make the Presbyterians and the Baptists Mormons all look normal." Well, we ain't Pentecostal. That's all, that's all I really want to know. "With commitments to the county and the church, the Rock Creek Rancher changed schedules and processes to meet his obligations. Without water, nothing can thrive as a rancher. 24-year resident John Nofsker said he believes that water is hyper-important. Whoa, hyper-important. Whoa, for maintaining our quality of life and economy in the valley. Rio Grande County appoints two people to the Rio Grande Conservation District every year, and other water organizations wield power as well. Water is so essential, it has to be protected. We need to get beyond the yes-and-then mentality in the valley. Representing District, District Two Commissioner John Nofsker is a former small-town mayor and economic development executive director with extensive ranching experience. A Vietnam veteran." Vietnam? I wonder what his experiences were. You had, uh, that one guy that did baseball in the Civil War? What was that, with the documentary with Ken Burns? Ken Burns, right? He did a documentary about Vietnam, I think, and he said, "Hey, why don't you go talk to a Vietnam veteran?" And I have, and every fucking one of them have let me down. So, what do you think about Vietnam? "I think we should have killed all of them." You, you don't think we should have stopped them? Nope. But you were wrong to begin with. Why can't they feed their poor? They're like Jesus. They're feeding their poor, and, you know, as an American, we believe in self-determination. If they wanna feed their poor, if we wanna be capitalist, and they wanna be communist, who the hell are you to say, I mean, my God, the conservative and liberal's been fighting a pet, you're trying to say, "Well, you can't be liberal. You gotta be conservative. You can't go around killing people to enforce your goddamn conservative beliefs." That's, uh, if capitalism is going to survive, it's gonna survive because it's the better system, not because you, you know, force-fed it down the throats of everybody. Right, Kissinger? "Commissioner John Nofsker is a former, former small-town mayor and economic development executive director, representing District Two, extensive ranching experience." "I'm a rancher. How much land you got? None. I live in, I live in the attic of a skyscraper in the city." "We believe that if there are perceived problems with the Public Health Department, the board would have made a plan to rectify those problems immediately upon the termination of the director. Now, more than two months later, and yet, and with yet a second interim director in place, no new hires have been made, and the department has, uh, only had one nurse. This would be troubling situation under any circumstances, but in the midst of a pandemic, with schools set to open, and with flu season nearly upon us, this is now a grave concern. The lack of prompt and effective action indicates that Mr. John Nofsker's leadership falls short of what is necessary to keep our county safe and functional. Due to the hostile work environment, the county's administration department has also lost two key people in the last week, including the county administrator, also the second person in that position to resign, while John Nofsker has been commissioner, among other things. The ability to manage the payroll is now severely limited as of the last regular meeting of the board. Mr. John Nofsker stated that a meeting needs to be held to determine how each commissioner can assist with administrative tasks, but that meeting has not been held yet, at least not in an open meeting setting, which again delays decisions and could affect how and when county employees and suppliers get paid. Citizens can watch these meetings for themselves on YouTube." Oh, very cool. The Rio Grande Seer. Finally, this damn Nofsker is saying one thing that's interesting. He's putting the Rio Grande Seer, all the county government, they should be online. Why wouldn't you do it online for, you know, transparency's sake? God, if I'm county commissioner, I'd be so proud of the honor, and I would do my damnedest to make sure, you know, I try to utilitarian approach, to try to represent every single goddamn citizen. There's only 12,000 people that live in Rio Grande. Why can't the county commissioners represent every single one of them? My God, you got Pueblo, they got like a city council, less than 10 people, and they represent 100,000. You're telling me three people can't represent, you know, 12,000, but 10 people can represent 100,000? It's one per 10,000. Yeah, God, that's plenty. You got three per 12,000, so. "We highly recommend that you watch all the posted meetings, particularly the ones held on May 27th and July 27th, okay? It's worth noting that fellow Commissioner Suzanne Bothell asked Commissioner Nofsker to resign during the July 27th meeting. For many years, Rio Grande County has been respected and considered a great place to work. It's had its share of problems, but has always worked in the spirit of solving the problems together. This is no longer the case. Under John Nofsker's ineffectual leadership, the citizens need and deserve a functional and reliable government for Rio Grande County, and thus, have launched this effort to recall and replace Mr. Nofsker with a qualified candidate to be chosen in a subsequent election. Time is of the essence. If we're to get this important decision before the voters on the November ballot, petitions are available for signature." There's a recall, you know, for the DA, Alonso Payne, right now. Been interesting to see how he thought about that recall. You know, he survived, I guess, that recall attempt, right? They never got it on the ballot, which, you know, that could be, he might have power over the damn clerk. Who knows? They would have to go straight to the Secretary of State's office if they wanted to. "The citizens need and deserve a functional and reliable government for Rio Grande County, and thus, have, uh, launched this effort to recall and replace John Nofsker with a qualified candidate." Already said that petitions are available for signature by registered voters. Rio Grande County, please, at quickly contact Deanne Elliott at dlys.elliott@gmail.com, Virginia Christensen at forgeone@guj.org, Met G Swift at metgswift@gmail.com, Laura Concellos, Mona Siring, if you want to sign the petition. God, they had such a beginning. I wonder how close they got to the signature thing? I would've got the signatures for him if, you know, I saw any truth to the damn thing. "March 4th, 2022, Rio Grande County, the Rio Grande County Commissioner John Nofsker announced he would be seeking reelection in the coming November 2022 election cycle." That's interesting. That is interesting, because I just talked to a Kathy at the Rio Grande County Commissioner, one of the secretaries there, and she said that he was not running for office. She said, "Well, he's already in office. He's already in office. I wanna talk to him. He's running for reelection. Does he not wanna talk to the people?" And then I was talking to Bonnie, and Bonnie had said that they, the enemy is the public. They said that they're protecting themselves from the public. You represent the public. If you're not representing the public, I mean, I can understand something about that, but, uh, are you for us or against us? In Ukraine, you see how them goddamn mayors and those, you know, county commissioners, they're local leaders. Russia invades, they fucking, you know, turn tail and run. So, these bastards think they can rule over us, but if Russia invaded, they're, you know, going to goddamn Montana. So, you're not gonna fight for this land, and this community, and these houses, and these buildings? Well, then we don't need you. We don't need you. The hell we need that bullshit for? "John Nofsker completed his first term in office, survived a recall during his second year in office. I will never look down on the processes of our local government. As far as the recall, I encourage people to look at what actually happened during that time and make a decision on their own. I encourage such processes. It's the beauty of having them in place."